Maat, welcome to the Thanksgiving day, not night, because we're usually at night. Welcome to study session, our Thursday get together where we just explore, read and share and talk about different literature within the Kemetic Canon. Whether it just be on the scholarly level or actual wisdom texts or mythos and things like that. So because of the holiday, we are a little early today. So if you did not get to watch us live, you will be able to watch later on. So we are going to pick up with the same book that we have been reading and hopefully today we will be finishing. Yes, so excited. So um, the book is Ancient Egypt and Black Africa by Theophile Obenga. And what we've been reading so far is Obenga has been going through the language of Seschmerunetra or Ronnie Kemit, the spoken language, Seschmerunetra, the written language of ancient Kemit. And essentially saying like that, we know that it is an African related language versus being very much influenced through Europe or excuse me, or influenced through the Middle East, if you will. So he is really just kind of going through the language and making those comparisons, making those illustrations for us to really just understand that concept. So that's where we're going to pick up where he's still going over certain comparisons. And then we will shift into the last and final chapter. So um, so the apisio al velor vibrant or the R sound. Let's see now I've lost myself. So in Pharaonic Kemetic, it would be remets, man or human being. Coptic would be rom, man, husband, romi or lomi. So again, this is what we're looking at here. And he says that this sound in Pharaonic Egyptian loses its vibration and becomes latter in Coptic in the dialect Remets or Lomi. So the R kind of turns into an L sound. In the Bantu Bochi language of the Congo, there is also an I which presents itself as olomi, husband, spouse or male. So we have three series with R, with L and with N. And a zero series with an identical consonant and for the words man, husband and spouse. So with the series, he has Pharaonic Egyptian Coptic newer from Sudan and Azer from Mali. So in Seschmerunetra, it would be remets. In Coptic, it would be roni or romi. And from Sudan, it would be ram, human person or individual. And from Mali, remi or remi with two Ms. Meaning child. So semantic transfer he has noted there. A series with an L. In Coptic, you have lomi. In Azer, you have lemi or lemi. In common Bantu, it's, um, I believe this is one of those things where you're supposed to make the click sound. So naumi? If I would be trying to say that right. In Mbachi, it would be oluemi, plural aluemi. From Zaire, it would be lome. Lubba from again, Zaire. From Mulami and from Congo, oluem, nuluem or muluem. So in the third series, he is talking about the N sound for Fong from Gabon. From Pungue from Gabon, from Cuba of Zaire and for Vili from Congo. So he says nanom, onom, onomol, num, num emphasized with two U's. And nunni, attraction of M becomes N. And then the zero series, he has omi, that's from Zaire. Bommi from Zaire again, bo, omi from Zaire. Maomi from Gabon and moomi plural from it says aqua opo, opa, sorry. We noticed that the R underwent modifications with the R persisting but RL and RLN pre-mutating. However, the balable nasal M appears throughout the nucleus consonant and fundamental element without change. Remets, romo, romi, ram, remi, lomi, lemi, lumii, oluemi, mu, luemi, nonom, onom, num, omi, ome, omi. This evidently speaks of a family relationship which permits us to see clearly the history of the compared languages. Their characteristic innovations in relation to more ancient forms, AKA Pharaonic Kemetic or Coptic. So Pharaonic rules follow the Egyptian R, Pharaonic and Coptic, and losing its vibration become a lateral in the faiueme Coptic dialect, L. This lateral becoming more nasal became a nasal apiocodental plosive. So remets, romi, romi, lomi, oluemi, nomi. In the same way, mouth in Pharaonic ra and Coptic ro, la, lo. And in Bochi, in Fongbe, nu, nu, yoraba, inu, ewe, nu, fanti, anu, balue, ni, bini or from Edo, unu, mosino, bozo lo and sarakole la. So a few lexicological correspondences. The resemblance of the words examined here can be explained by the sameness of origin for these resemblances. Both in form and meaning convey terms manifested inherited. The compared languages have not been in contact recently, except the contact of origin before the division of languages. On the other hand, the testimony of two or three non-adjacent languages remote in space favors the original link since chance is excluded on inherited terms. Therefore, in Pharaonic in Seschmerunetra, so ba'i, palm, Coptic, ba, ba'i, ba'i, b, b e i, is that last one, palm or branch. In the Congo, ibia, palm tree. From the Congo, Gabon and Zaire is ba, palm tree. Iba, palm tree from Zaire again. Cameroon, tuba. And in Arabic, just for comparison sake, and he literally says for comparison. Nahala, palm, palm tree or date palm. So we notice again, all the African languages have like that ba element, whereas that's nowhere present in Arabic. So the next example he gives is Pharaonic, I keep wanting to say Egyptian. But the word is ba, spirit or soul. Coptic, ba'i, spirit or soul. And from the Congo, ba, to be sound and spirit, to be spiritually honest. From Mozambique, kuba, ba, to be, b, bio, coming from Niger, Niger, double of being, soul. From northeast Zaire, obu, to be, to exist, to have spirit. From Mali, b, it's b and b, b e and b i, to be or to exist. And then, good grief, I'm so sorry. Sorry about that. And then for comparison, we have the Arabic, nafs, N A F S, which means sole essence, being, wuh, virtual or vital, not virtual, vital breath. So again, we see that the African languages all have that ba kind of sound to it. And then the comparison, it's nowhere present. So the third example he gives is bin in Seschmerunetra or Ronnie Kemit, that means bad. Coptic, buni, bani, boni, bani, meaning bad. In the Congo, ibena, failing or ill. Bon, bad. Bon, bad luck. That's Senegal and Mali. Bané, bad. Buon, bad luck. Bon, ill. Bon maliciousness, bon ill or bad. Bien, bad. So all of those languages were medieval soniki. Senofo from Songhai from Niger. Piul, mosi, and then from Nigerian plateau. And then again, the comparison is sar, ill. Sai, bad. So again, sounds nothing like it. So the fourth example, oh, he gives a lot of examples with this one. So in Seschmerunetra or in Ronnie Kemit, it's iba, yiba, to dance. In Wolof in Senegal, it's yiba. In northeast Zaire, it's eba. In Gimbagwa. Gimwa. Oh, sorry, no, Gimwaga. Now I got it. I had to be, I had to sound that out. B, to dance, from Dabanziri, b, dance. Monzobo, b, dance. From Ethiopia, du, bo, to dance, dup, to dance. Bo, to drum, from Mali, Mbachi and from Congo, ibina, to dance. And then again, the comparison in Arabic is raches, dance or rakasa, to dance. So he continues on with this and you know, I'll leave it, but he does go over the word for water, mu. And then the comparison is ma. So instead of mu, it's ma. But all the other ones are kind of like, you know, same, same kind of situation where they're more similar to Ronnie Kemit. Mut is mother. And then he goes through from Burkina Faso, Ivory Coast, Mali, Sudan, Cameroon, South Africa, a lot of languages that are the same. And then I know, I think it's umi, but it's um, which is mother for Arabic. So again, illustrating the difference. Ka, so or then. That's Ronnie Kemit. Then he goes through like Luo or Luo. Ka, Zaire, Congo, Cameroon, Niger, Mali, ka, ko, ke, like it's all that kind of sound. Then he got Seschmerunetra from man or someone. So it's in Coptic, it's sa. And then again, he goes through all these other like logba, South Cameroon, Congo, Zaire. Common Bantu, he has all those similarities. And then Arabic, it says rajul, man or zawaj, husband or spouse. So again, different, totally different. The next Seschmerunetra, not Seschmerunetra, Ronnie Kemit, he has, or technically Seschmerunetra because it's written down. Yi, to come. So it's two Is. And then he has languages from Congo, Zaire, Gabon, Cameroon, Ivory Coast, Equatorial, Africa, Bade, Nigeria. All of them again have that like ya, yi, yi, ya kind of a sound. And then ata or ja. Is the comparison for the Arabic. And then the last part is, or the last phrase word he has is rimmi, to cry. Then he compares for Nigeria, Kenya, Cameroon, Congo, all again, similar kind of words. And then he gets into Arabic and says baka, to cry, to be tearful. So again, all of these different examples, he is really just kind of bringing it home to say like, look, this is why that whole Afro-Asiatic thing, like y'all are really blowing it up. That's not really a hundred percent true. Like there are some things, but they might be borrowed terms or something like that, but it's way more related to you know, languages within the African continent. So in conclusion for this specific, I said Pacific, hello, listen to me, specific chapter. So one, the homo-semitic or Afro-Asiatic is only a scientific invention. A predialectal ancestor common in Semitic to Berber to and to Kemetic languages was never reconstructed following the method of comparative historical linguistics, the very aim of which is to link genetically the languages concerned. So number two, the numerous morphological syntac, phonetic and lexicological coordinances, I'm sorry, concordances that can be clearly established between Pharaonic, Ronnie Kemit, Coptic and all black modern African languages are of a historical genetic order and might be scientifically possible to reconstruct the common predialectical ancestor of all of these ancient and modern languages. Three, consequently, if African linguistic studies go around in circles, it is precisely because of the lack of a new and dynamic methodology. And also because of the tenacious preconception which insists on splitting the Egypto-Nubian Valley of the Hapi or the Nile from the rest of the black African world. So that is a point that he makes quite often. It is imperative not to follow the well-trodden paths in the field of inherited African linguistics, not to follow a particular linguistic canon solely descriptive, but to engage in truly African linguistics broad-based and comparative. And then finally, number five, this fertile path is the same that was laid out with devotion and science by our master professor Sheikh Ansadiyeh. So being systematic about it, really understanding like how language works and things like that. I think that is a very, very important point, especially for Kemeti you in the 21st century, like understanding how important language is. And you know, I think I may have said this in the past, like I am not the strongest student when it comes to language in general and language acquisition and proper grammar and all of those things. But the more I do learn Seschmerunetra, the more I try to utilize Ronnie Kemit in conversation, it definitely helps understand like the worldview and really connect with the ancestors, what they were going for, why they were doing certain things, why they were saying certain things, so on and so forth. So this chapter, even though it may give me a lot of stumbling blocks, I really appreciate it just because it did give me the technical side. And it did somewhat repeat because I know like that was my beef earlier. I'm like, gosh, it's so repetitive. But you know, it's, I think just a teeny bit different because he did give different examples throughout. I think the last thing that I would want to say in general about the languages is I think for Kemetic practitioners, like a lot of people will just say like hatap or hotap. You know, and they'll just repeat kind of certain things, but they don't really understand how important that is. And I say that because, you know, if we look at other systems like, and I again, if y'all know anything, I really don't like making a lot of comparisons, but if we look at Hebrew and like what that group of people did, like they made a concerted effort of like, okay, we need to have learning materials so kids can learn this. We need to have learning materials so that adults can learn this. We need to have schools. We need to have language schools. We need to have scholarship. We need to have it spoken. We need to make newspapers and periodicals. So having things available so that people could actually learn to speak and read Hebrew versus the Yiddish that they were used to or other, you know, languages depending on where they were from. So it's the same thing. There are many different languages that have been reconstructed. Like if we look at a lot of Native American languages, like especially now, there's a big push within that community, like yo, we gotta go back to get our language. We, you know, this is who we are. This is, you know, our foundation for what it is we're trying to do. And if we are gonna call ourselves Kemites, but don't have a relationship with the language, even if it's not the super, super technical piece of the language, but enough to just understand what, you know, is being said and what you know, how the world is framed around us, like it's so much more than just hotap. You know, like we should be able to write, even if we're not writing in actual glyphs, if we're writing in like demonic or something like that, you know, a little faster and easier to write, like we should be aiming to do that as a community. Because it is one of the identifying cultural factors that binds us, you know, morally or spiritually, the forty-two Tepran Maat binds us together as a group of people. So does language. So you know, and then we can go into like beliefs and mores and things like that. But I think a lot of what's how Seschmerunetra is being taught now and Ronnie Kemit is being utilized now is how can I put it? It's, it's very much on the scholarly level. It's kind of like you use it to talk to other people. Like it's not really being, I don't want to say marketed, but it's not really being emphasized for the everyday Kemetic person. And again, could you imagine being born and not understanding English? Like think about how much we think in English, we, we speak in English, we communicate to our loved ones in English, we write in English, we pay our bills in English, like we totally are immersed and live in it, but then we want to call ourselves Kemites, but have an English mindset or you know, honestly, not everybody who's, you know, Kemetic or identifies as Kemetic. So it could be in Portuguese with people down, you know, I know there's a really good group of people down in Brazil. I know there's a good amount in France or in other French-speaking African countries. So it's this idea that, you know, we need to kind of understand. And then I think as a piece, as far as if we're gonna talk about Pan-Africanism, that is one way, being able to use and understand that language is like, how can I say it? If we were to go like with Garvey or any of those kind of ideals of, of uniting. You know, we don't have to worry about, oh, I gotta learn Portuguese and I gotta learn French and then I gotta learn this and then I gotta learn that. Like we can literally have a central language, you know, in Ronnie Kemit, in Seschmerunetra. And no matter if we speak English or Portuguese or whatever, like we can all understand each other and communicate with each other. So similar to even how Malana Karanga said like, you know, Swahili using Kiswahili. And a lot of people like, oh my gosh, like why would you pick that language? Like so many people don't even speak that language. They're not, you know, their ancestry is not from that area. Well, no. Kiswahili is the largest language spoken in modern times on the continent of Africa. So it covers a wide group of people. So I think for us as Kemites, to make sure that we understand the language and can read and write, just so as long as we're literate. We, we don't have to be poets and, and speechwriters, but so long as we have a basic foundation, foundational understanding of Seschmerunetra, I think that is definitely one of the goals that we should aim towards. So let's move ahead. We are on chapter four. Yes, I'm so excited. We're finally finishing this book. Alright, so and no lie, this is, and if you've watched previous videos, this is definitely why I bought this book. So chapter four says male female relations in ancient Kemit. Super important. So today, in the 20th century, 21st century. We understand the organization of civilized society as a separation of legislative, judicial, executive, religious and economic powers. So pretty much if you study sociology, this is something, and if you've watched, like I said, other videos, I've kind of talked about something similar where as society, we have social institutions and social, like social forces, but social institutions that kind of keep society going. So that does have to do with like laws, with governance, with governance and politics, with education, with, you know, economics and money, like those things for a, for a society to be successful, you have all of these pillars. And again, one of them is religious, spiritual family, like those are part of it too. So the separation naturally engenders a hierarchy among the representatives of these different distant, I'm sorry, distinct powers. To the separation and hierarchy, one must add the social stratifications due to economic production and to the socio-political relationships resulting from the production and distribution of natural, I'm sorry, national resources. Thus, in a hierarchical society, whether they be slave owning, feudal, industrial, technological, et cetera, men almost invariably assume essential functions and enjoy powers of decision and therefore dominate women. Hence the movement so characteristic of feminist struggles for the emancipation of women. We are used, we are used from that perspective to analyzing social organizations through a European interpretation of history. From Greco-Roman antiquity to this day, Europe has viewed history as a terrain of class struggles. So I think this is also something that's what he's kind of, the direction he's going in is this idea that we can't get away from class because human beings naturally put that as part of their society. Even though we have systems like socialism or communism or social democracy and things like that, even still, there's still usually some sort of hierarchy, like there's, there's gonna be somebody who's in charge, making the calls on behalf of the whole. There's always gonna be some sort of leadership even in like, oh, I'm like, I don't want to get too ahead. So from Greco-Roman antiquity to this day, Europe has viewed history as only a terrain of class struggles. Struggles between citizens and non-citizens, slave master, plebeian and praetorian, serf and lord, bourgeois and noble, aristocrat and king, peasant and city dweller, worker and bourgeois, man and woman. But force of habit and through education, we apply the same models to the peoples of Old Sumer and Mesopotamia, to the societies of imperial China, to the Mayas, to the Aztecs, North American, I'm gonna say Aboriginals, I'm not gonna say that word. Starts with a I. Pacific peoples, peoples of societies of black Africa. In black Africa, one speaks readily of Anar- yeah, Anarchic. I don't know why I'm like bugging. Societies, feudal societies, kinship and clanic systems, granary systems, age groups, secret societies, patrilineal or matrilineal regimes and all sorts of nonsense which do not stand the test of truth. Exclamation point with that one. This legacy of ethnographic quote, science, it was the Morgans, the Bakno Fens, the Levy Broles and their disciples, functionalists, diffusionists, structuralists, who spoke of primitive society. Elementary kingship struggles, poplack tribes, gifts of women, savage thoughts, universal matriarchy, primitive arts and savage people. There is nothing serious in all of this. And the gravest mistake would be to describe Pharaonic society with the criteria and models laid down by either ethnography or simplistic Marxism. To see in the nasut, in Kemetic society of antiquity as a replica of the kings of medieval Europe is to refuse to face facts. Moreover, there was never slavery in Egyptian society in the time of the pharaohs. Okay, so a little asterisk there. That is, okay, so maybe what he's saying here? Because I definitely know there was slavery in ancient Kemit, point blank period. Like there was slavery, like the Kemites was putting other groups of people into slavery. They was putting their own people into slavery. They was putting prisons of war into slavery, like they was going to capture slaves down north. They, they, they was doing that kind of thing. So we're not gonna sit here and, and try to pretend like they didn't. They definitely did. There's definitely a lot of evidence that says that they did. Now, the, what, the only point that I can kind of like say, well, maybe is where he says during Pharaonic times. So during the actual dynasty, so maybe, you know, I would have to go back and look at time periods. I'm not a hundred percent. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure it's gonna be in alignment with uh what Obenga is saying, and that's okay. Cause again, we understand this was written back in the nineties, and you know, studying and scholarship is an ongoing thing. Uh, but we would need to explore, like, when it comes to slavery in ancient Kemet. Um, you know, was it indeed like during intermediate periods? Was it pre-dynastic? Was it towards the end? Was it during foreign rulers, like, you know, and what did that look like? I think that would be worthy of exploration, but to just say um that there was no slavery, like, we we know in twenty-twenty-one that that is just um not the case, there was slavery. Um. In antiquity, comedic women were never dominated by comedic men. Lastly. There have never been social classes or struggles between social class in the Marxist sense of the word, not during the long history of ancient Kemet. Let us therefore examine the status of women in ancient Kemet. So, I do think also what he, the point that he's making about um the Marxist understanding of social classes, I think that's a very, very important distinction that needs to be made. Uh, because we still have many, many people uh within uh who identify, self-identify as comedic. People who are initiated into different temples and shrines, uh, different leaders, you know, we have different groups of people, and a lot of them um do have uh leanings and understandings and appreciation of socialism and co- I don't know, I don't. I've never really say, heard anyone say communism, but um getting into conversations, you you will notice like the idea of socialism. You know, even when they don't call it that, the ideas of socialism do come tr- come true, hello, come through. So um, that is definitely a thing, there are, there are a lot of people who um, you know, think that way. And I get it, because we live in the United States, and that is, you know, just in general. People see capitalism, especially post-COVID, we see like how people are treated. Um, you know, people being evicted, people not being able to get health insurance, but you know, we just see all of these things. And a lot of times we will think like, oh, okay, you know, socialism is the way to go, let's, you know, and then they take that uh modern experience, and then look at the ancient Kemet to you, see some some things in there, and then just kinda squish it all in one. And it's not necessarily um true. So that is something we need need to be careful of. Uh, so, number one, uh equality between men and women. In antiquity. Uh, Kemet stood out as the only country to truly guarantee women a status equal to that of men, which that is still true, there is no scholarship that says otherwise. Uh, since the Old Kingdom, or at least in my experience from what I've seen, since the Old Kingdom, it has been attested to be to beyond all reasonable doubt, all uh specialties and specialists of comedic law revel out and patriot of the nineteenth century and recently Theodores, alum and pestmen have confirmed that comedic women were uh jurid- juridically, there's no T, juridically. I'm like, they were legally equal, okay, like, I'm I could sit here and keep trying to pronounce the word, but it means legally. So they were legally equal to men and enjoyed equal footing, um, as was the case between sons and daughters. Now. This is, like, we will see a lot of times, like, people will say and things about Islam. Where, you know, there's certain attitudes towards women and da-da-da, some of it, you know, some things can be religion, but other things are also like culture and local culture, um, to how that expression looks. So, when we're saying legally men and women were equal in ancient Kemet, absolutely. Um, women could go to court, they can own things that, like, every, it wasn't like in Europe and other, you know, things where everything was done through the man. However, there were jobs that, like, when we say gender roles. You know, like, so yes, women were legally equal, but they were very, very um understood gender roles within comedic society. So, you know, we don't want to um conflate the two, and we wanna be very careful about that. Um, so comedic women could own or acquire assets, contract, or undertake whatever without hinder without hindrance. From birth, comedic women enjoyed full rights and no change as to their legal status occurred on account of their getting married or bearing children. They had full and completely legal rights for the time of the age of majority. So basically, um, commit, you know, comedic women were way different, um, compared to other places. Uh, and that's absolutely true, like, I, a lot of the things that I've researched and like looked into. Especially as a result of like all this Kevin Samuel's conversation, like, that really, really made me start thinking about like, oh, my gosh, like, hmm. What did that actually look like? Like, do our, or is that like Abrahamic thing, and as a comedic woman, and, you know, comedic men and comedic society, like? Yeah, leave that to them, that's that's not us. So, um. When it says, women, yeah, women could um negotiate their own contracts, they could divorce their husband, they could get um alimony. Uh, they could open their own business, they could, you know, they, it was all of those things, like, they literally could do whatever. However, gender roles were still in effect, so, just to remind us. Uh, two, the freedom of women. Comedic women did not experience the particular form of tutelage Roman women were subjected to. The power of parents was above all a form of protection. In cases of succession that was passed on uh, that was passed on, was the same to men and to women. Uh, comedic women were relatively free to choose, there would be spouses, yep, absolutely. Um, I I wanna say uh, except for maybe like with social status, so like aristocracy and and all of them, like, you know, it might be a little different. Um, but generally, women had a say, they didn't just marry because they had to, unless it was one of the cases where um, you know, they were marrying for political reasons, but oftentimes it was very much thought that, like, women don't date, don't marry outside men, but, you know, men could marry outside women, but, you know. Women don't do that, because, you know, the line is past, you know, the woman is the throne, so, you don't do that. Um, but, just in general, and it, but uh let me rephrase that, the first wife would never be a foreign wife, if if it was a political, you know, marriage, you know, then that would be maybe like a second, third, or whatever kinda wife. And again, multiple, you know, having multiple wives and polygamy, you know, all that stuff. That was like a rich people thing, that wasn't an everyday, regular, daglish, regular person thing, so, um, you know, just as a disclaimer. So, um, da-da-da-da-da. Such independence was strongly evidenced at the close of the indigenous dynasties to warrant two Greek tragic poets, Sophocles and Euripides, to describe in many of their works comedic men as sitting in a corner while their womenfolk dealt with all household affairs. With his uh famous uh Prostanga, Tolmy, the fourth Phila- um Philopater, one, the Greek king of Kemet between uh two-twenty-one and two-zero-three BCE. Partially revoked traditional comedic law by questioning the notion of equality between the genders or between sexes, not genders. There's a difference. Uh, this could only have been been so because of the Greek system of uh patriarchal control in a setting of uh, you know. Matriarchy, essentially. Um, so the notion of caste does not seem to have uh existed in pharaonic Kemet. Indeed, all uh prerogatives were granted to comedic women, like men, comedic women were called by their name, which as early as the Middle Kingdom was predicated if they were married, by the expression of Nabet Per, meaning household mistress. However, uh through the legal status of, though the legal status of women was similar to that of men in the Old Kingdom. They were nonetheless compelled to obey one moral imperative, that is, to be a virgin before marriage. Now. Um, let me finish that. Furthermore, to not commit adultery if they wish to remain married. In any case, faithfulness was required of a ma- of a married woman and to transgress it transgress it amounted to social stigma. So, that is definitely, I wanna say ninety percent from what I've seen. So, I have seen, um. It says moral imperative to be a virgin before marriage, I have seen things that say contrary, like, you know, that, and again. Let's also be clear that comedic history was thousands of years. So what happened in one time period may not necessarily be in another time period, so, and he, since he doesn't say what time period he's talking about. You know, it, what he is saying could be true for a certain amount of time, and what I'm saying could be true in another period of time. So, uh, but what I've seen is that um women, you know, you didn't wanna be out flouncing with everybody, like, you didn't necessarily wanna be a prostitute per se, that would be less desirable, uh, but like prostitution wasn't a crime, it was, it was a job, it was a legal business, it was allowed. Uh, there, there was no likes, I wanna say social stigma, like, there was absolutely none, like, you know, the, it, it was it was more accepted, though, like, let's, I'll put it like that. So, um. But being a virgin before marriage, I have seen things that say contrary to that, like, that if you had premarital sex, um. You know, like, you may, it may not be, make people happy, but they're not gonna be like, no, I cannot marry you because you're not a virgin, some people might. Uh, but the other thing of being loyal, um, once you are married, that is definitely true. Like, once you get married, if you're a woman and you're committing adultery, and it's not because you're a woman, how dare you, like, no, it's not about that. It's again, family lineage was passed down through the women. So if you are, you know, cheating on your husband and you get pregnant, or who knows who the father of that baby is, like, now you're messing with a family line, you're messing with ancestral lines, you, you know, like, it it's it it gets messy. So, um, when it comes to that, that's why it's like you could get stoned to death if you cheated. Uh, you could just get divorced, I mean, that happened to, it wasn't like just stone, she's an evil witch, like, no, um, you could just get divorced, a woman could ask her husband for divorce, so like, if he cheated. Um, she could totally ask for divorce, get alimony, you know, split the assets because they had a marriage contract. Or according to the marriage contract in general, like, where, you know, what they might do, uh, if something happens, but, um. Yeah, cheating on your husband was a no-no, because it had to do with way more than just, you know, loyalty and marriage. Um, cause again, it's like loyalty to family, um, you know, whose kid is this, da-da-da, cause they didn't have DNA tests back then. So, um, that. Three, free ownership, uh legacies and wills. So, in the Third Dynasty, Lady, uh Lady, hello, Lady Nebsonet, mother of high-ranking civil servants. Um, Matian disposed freely of her wealth, she left a will to her children, to her son, she bequeathed only fifty um, auroras. And then he has a number, which I'm not sure what that even means, but okay, he has a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty M square. Uh, it was understood that all members of the family, father, mother, and children could own assets and dispose of them the way they saw fit. In ancient Kemet, women were under the authority of neither their husband nor their eldest son. Being equal to a man in esteem as well as in law, comedic women were not under anyone's tutelage. They could uh inherit from their husbands just the same as their children could. The equality in succession rights afforded to sons and daughters was testimony to the jury, um parity between the sexes. Accordingly, like their male counterparts, comedic women could acquire real estate. Unlike Mesopotamia, where succession rights for women were limited, uh comedic enshrined them into official policy. And then he has an asterisk, and it goes on to say, one can compare this, since contemporary writers such as Gary Robbins, Women in Ancient Egypt, for example. Like to compare ancient comedic uh society, usually unfairly, with modern times. With nineteenth-century Victorian England, where a woman's assets upon marriage automatically became the possession of her husband. Or the reality of Switzerland, when a woman in the late twentieth century did not have the right to vote. One can therefore understand the manifold re- representation of European women protesting against their condition. So essentially, all he's saying is, like, you know. You you ca- it's 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 not apples-to-apples comparison, essentially, so, we have to be very, very careful about that. And uh understanding, like, the society, the culture, the time period, and um, everything doesn't stay the same, things change. Um, number four, instruction and education. From an early age of four and for several years, certain girls, certain could be admitted into a program of training given to those children whose parents wanted them to become civil servants. No specter of caste-haunted comedic society sufficed only to recall, as reiterated by Patah Heta the sage, that Netra created all human beings as equal, thus, comedic women uh from humble backgrounds were able, after an appropriate training, to fill posts open equally to men and um to men and women. For example, in the Sixth Dynasty, Lady Nabet, the second mother-in-law of King Pepe the First was judge and visor, AKA prime minister. Um, the Twenty-Sixth Dynasty would witness against such an appointment. In the Old Kingdom, some women were authorized to study medicine and surgery. Uh, Lady Pachet, who was buried in um, in Mustaba in Giza dating back to Giza. It literally said G-I-Z-E-H. Dating back to the Fourth Dynasty was a doctor and held the title of director of female doctors. She was the first known woman doctor in history. Women who studied to become scribes could enter public administration, H. Fisher has recorded more than twenty-five different titles held by women in pharaonic administration in the Old Kingdom. Old Kingdom, not even the new, not even the middle, not an intermediary period, the Old Kingdom. Among which are supervisor supervisor of royal stores, head of department of stores, supervisor of funerary priests. Official in charge of funerals. Uh, Lady Nenofer, a landowner and owner of considerable assets in the New Kingdom had her own business. She was one, uh, she was one of them, so y'all might say she's a true businesswoman. Indeed, she used to delegate her commercial agents, her shoot, shoot you. Uh, the sale of products she wanted to dispose of, her agents had links with the Syrian counterparts, so she was like international businesswoman. The clergy itself was open to educated women, conducting religious service just as men did. They were paid the same and were known as prophet or servant of um God, Hemet Nater, or Hemnater if it was a guy. Celice celibacy was not prerequisite for service in the temple, the opposite was later uh develop, was a later development. Uh, after the comedic example of early Christian monks. So, um, that is definitely true, I have seen things that say, like, especially towards the end of um the history, that like, you know, extreme cleanliness, like shaving like the hair off of your body, spending hours cleaning, and, you know, um. Like, it it all very much changed, like, and I am, the way I liked, I don't wanna say like to think about it, but the way I think of it or compare it in my mind is um if we look at um Japan, like Japan's history, and um, like, we had samurais, and then you had a samurai warrior class. And then, you know, but in times that there were no, there was no war, it became way more uh, what's the word I'm looking for, conservative, it was much, much more conservative. So, um. This conservatism made it so that, um. You know, now people who were samurais were, you know, had to do so much more to prove honor, to prove valor, to prove all of these different things. Um, and it became like the, like, almost like unhealthy, I guess you would say. Um, so it's the same thing, like, with the priests, that it it just became, they became this huge social class, and they had so much power and so much control, and then outside groups came in and tried to take that control, shift that control, and, you know, like, all of that. You know, that it became kinda like not good, and then the civilization fell, so, um. Yeah, I just, that was the connection I got anyways. So, why did women in comedic society enjoy such an elevated social, judicial, political, economic, and religious position? This question brings us to the very heart of the fundamental principle, uh, which of comedic society. And that is, drum roll, divine femininity. Uh, before the universal dawn, and this is the five, number five. Uh, before the universal dawn, the demiurge himself was already both male and female, symbolizing thus the fundamental principles. The fathers and the mothers, uh, who were with him when he was in the noon, so pause before I even go back. For those that might be like, what, the commit to you believed in intersexed people or. They believed in intersectness and the, the, or, or transgender, like, you know, I could just see that going way left, that is not what that is saying. That is not what that means, um, it, it's the idea that. Everything has masculine and feminine uh, proponents to it or, or composition. Uh, there is no hundred percent feminine, there is no hundred percent masculine. And you know, we're usually shades of gray in between, you know, that, so, um. And a lot of that has to do with um, gender, you know, and how, how one's sex. Is expressed and how society views that, so, um. This need to identify the female principle in divine action was vital to the inhabitants of Kemet. The divine world was conceptualized by um, the commit to you. Through images accessible to them and based on uh, complementarity of the sexes, noon and nunet, he and heheth. Uh, amen and amunets, niel and niut, chew and tafnut, assar and asset, sutas and nebehet. Uh, here are the extracts from the great hymn to a set on the papyrus from, oh my lord. O X Y R H Y N C H U S. I'm not even respectfully. I'm not even gonna try that one, that one's a little much, but this is what it looks like, just in case. Y'all, y'all wanna look it up, so from the papyrus, uh, number thirteen eighty. Uh, and it comes from the second century BCE, so, Netert of numerous games, pride of the female sex. Thou reigneth in the sublime and infinite, thou wanteth women at the age of procreation to come and anchor with men. It is thee the mistress of the earth, thou maketh the power of women equal to that of men. Thus, the equity between men and women in comedic antiquity was an integral part of the divine order as opposed. To uh, economic, servile, ethnographic or feudal considerations. Hence, it was quite natural for women to be fully integrated into pharaonic royalty, the partic. The particularly important role played by the royal monarch, uh, oop, I'm gonna finish this sentence and then I'll come back to the picture. The wife of the nesut was maintained throughout history, like the importance of the woman was. Always there and preserved. Uh, so the thing that I uh, skipped is it's a picture of Aset. Uh, wife of Assar, responsible for his resurrection, a great healer whose secret knowledge of medicine cured Netarah from facing certain death. I think it's very interesting that her knowledge of medicine cured him, but she's also the one who poisoned him, so, just saying. Alright, uh, uh, Set was revered and her attributes transferred to the mother. Of Christ Mary from the early beginnings of Christianity through the fifteenth century. See Stephen Curl's uh, Egyptomania nineteen ninety-four, London, New York for more details, and then he has this picture. Of Aset. Heredity was uh, insured by the royal wife, legitimizer of all heirs. Upon her fell the duty to transmit the solar royal blood to the children of the new king. The rights of the mother, royal daughter were primary, over two hundred, I'm sorry, over two thousand years ago. The historian Manetho, third century BCE rightly reminded us that the nesuts of the second dynasty had established. Women's full legitimate right to occupy the throne, how then do we understand the pharaonic mentality? Kemet had a universal consciousness of reality which signified an impulsion towards a principle of becoming. And it is this becoming which naturally has two primordial elements, male and female. The creative function is fundamental to a universal consciousness. The creative function is fundamental to a universal consciousness, the principle of harmony. Means that the commit to you lived in a cosmic ambiance, that the, that Kemet. Is in the image of the sky and in its perpetual creation. Thus, the pharaonic undertaking is a task of constant cosmic renewal, therefore, in ancient Kemet. Theology, religious power is the doctrine of the metaphysical powers and above all of becoming keper. Of the being of capri, of maintaining it and returning it to its source. Astronomy is rightly the science of harmony maat and of celestial influences. Medicine is in Kemet, the dialectical relation of the living body with the cosmic influx. And its relation to metaphysical powers and a comedic priest explaining this concept to Solon in Plato's uh, Timaeus. Which such a vision, with such a vision of the world, it is ridiculous, ridiculous. Literally what he's saying, ridiculous. It is ridiculous to separate the male principle from the female principle. The religious from the political, the economic from the sacred, the clergy from everyday life. Comedic society was a society of cosmic exaltation, of qualitative exaltation. And spiritualization, today it is difficult to understand totally pharaonic mentality, so. It is not abusive, indeed erroneous, to use our schemes of sociological analysis. To try to understand the social organization of Kemet, which was not simply political or economic, but an organization. Based on fundamental cosmic principle, which predi- predicated itself on the complementarity of duality. Okay, so that is the book, um, and just so everybody knows what I was looking at, at the end of each chapter, he has like questions. Which I have to say, I really like that about this book specifically, uh, just because, um. You know, i- it's like a nice little quiz that you uh, get to just make sure that you kind of have the um. The concepts that he's talking about, so, um. I think that is all for our book, and when I say I think, I mean it is, we are done. So um, the next book that we will be getting into is, um, if I'm not mistaken, Gods of. Gods of Egypt or uh, gods of ancient Egypt, it is by Budge, uh, it is a two volume. Uh, so we're gonna start with volume number one, uh, we are not going to read every single uh, piece, but we are going to start with that book. Um, next week, so next Thursday, we'll be back at our regular time at seven PM Eastern, wait, is it seven? Nope, I almost messed that up. It's six PM Eastern Standard Time, I'm so sorry, I was like, no, no, it's not seven. So six PM Eastern Standard Time, we are going to get into that book and continue study session. Um, if you are interested in that book, I do have it on my website, um, for a small donation. Uh, just to kind of help out with the hosting fees of keeping like these large files, uh, so. I do have other ebooks and PDF uh, literature that is available, uh, again for small donation. Um, to be able to download it and have access to it, um, a lot of the books and literature that I do have in there, again, all of it. The majority of it has to do with ancient Kemet, uh, Egyptology, um, black history. Um, some metaphysical stuff, not a whole, whole lot about the metaphysical stuff, but like that's a lot of the body of, of it. Uh, wisdom texts, I also have a lot of wisdom texts too, so, um. Incidentally, since I'm talking about my online store and since today is Thanksgiving, we are kicking off the holiday season. And um, I will be having my first Black Friday sale, uh, where I have comedic holiday cards. So if you celebrate Web and Jed, if you celebrate Masharoo, if you celebrate, um, the feast of Sekmet. Uh, so again, that would be like winter solstice for those who are not familiar, that would be the equivalent of like winter, winter solstice. Um, what the Christians call uh, Christmas, um. And uh, New Year, or the Gregorian New Year-ish, you know, thing, but it's Feast of Sekmet. And uh, I also have Kwanzaa cards and just in general, uh, Afrocentric um, holiday cards. So those will be up on the website starting tomorrow because, um, tomorrow is Black Friday, today is Thanksgiving. So that'll be on there, I also have like face masks with um, the Netaru on them. I have tumblers that are gonna be on sale, um, with the Netaru on them, the steel water bottles that have the Netaru on them. Um, as well as some like prayers that are on there, I have Maat poster, I've got Florida water, I've got, um. I've got so many different things in the Aquaja in the uh, uh, in my online store, so. Um, a lot of the items are twenty-five percent off, other items are, um, like you get a bulk deal. Um, so I definitely, definitely invite you all to come to my website, take a look, take a gander. You know, this holiday season doesn't just need to be about materialistic things, we can give. Uh, items that feed our spirit and kind of help elevate us, uh, and if not a gift, a greeting with a card. So um, as I said, we'll be starting our new book next week, next Thursday, uh, six PM Eastern Standard Time. And we will be starting our new book and you will see in the feed, and if you don't already, please, uh, follow. Uh, comment, join the conversation, uh, if you wanna get into in-depth conversation, we do have our group comedic living in the twenty-first century over on Facebook. Uh, where we, you know, just kind of talk and keep it going, so until then, um, I'm a twin poneteers. Give yourself to Netra daily, keep yourself in Netra daily and may tomorrow be as today, have a great day, Jimmy and Hatab.